All right, welcome folks. This is the October 8th, 2024 Open Public Meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees, being held via hybrid format, allowing remote attendance. First, I will take a roll call to confirm the trustees, library staff and persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. Trustees KK Hill.
Here.
Rob Pettit.
Here.
Jay Fialpa.
Here.
Michael O'Neil.
Here.
Megan Small.
Yeah.
Joshua Small.
Here.
And me, Erhard Greif, I am here. All right, library staff, library director, Robert.
Here.
Administrative specialist, Jenna White.
Yeah.
Program specialist, Gail Dunnitt.
Yeah.
And recording secretary, Faith Christie.
Yeah.
We also have representative from UTIL, Principal Brett Benson. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
And Hank Haff from the town.
Hi Hank.
Hi Hank.
Good evening.
Do we have any representatives from the Library Foundation? Needham. All right, this meeting is being recorded. If there's a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at 7:00 PM on November 12th, 2024. So I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at 7:03 PM. We always start with a public comment section. Citizens are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each, not to exceed a total of 10 minutes. Citizens are encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. Those who provide advance notice will be called upon first. While the board will take public comments under advisement, there may be no opportunity for discussion or debate during this portion of the meeting. So do we have any visitors who would like to make a statement today? I believe so. So we will move on to approving the minutes. So.
Oh, it's minutes for the September.
Yes, it is the September.
Sorry.
Yeah. It's okay. I would like to request a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2024 meeting. And then we can discuss them.
Second. Second.
Great. So any discussion of the minutes? Michael, did you want to?
Yeah, I just, I put together just a, just a quick, quick synopsis, so everybody can try to edify themselves with that. And it was, most of the times, everything is just really solid. And I just wanted to just add a few things to, if you look at the minutes in the section, like new business, page two, page three, page four, so that we don't prolong this. I just added a few things, just to add to the flow. And maybe if there's discussion on it, people are in agreement, or they think that, no, this would be a great time.
All right, so, so Michael submitted some revisions for this on paper, and we'll make sure that those are reflected in the final draft. Any comments on the revisions that Michael submitted?
Just going to take a moment to see what they are.
Okay.
And I tried to make sure that they were in this section, so that people can easily find it.
I don't see anything here that's a significant change in the meaning of the.
Oh, great. And these were all the things that I pointed out anyway, so.
Excellent.
Fine.
Any other comments, proposed changes? Doing the work. All right, hearing none, move to a voice vote, since we're all in person today, which is exciting. So all those in favor of revising the minutes as submitted by Michael and adopting them, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? All right, minutes are adopted. Approved. So moving on to the next part of the agenda, we are going to hear from UTIL, Brett Benson, who's on Zoom about the Phase One update, and I assume also the cost estimate today. So I'll hand it over to.
Great, thanks, Erhard. Good evening, trustees. Thanks for having me tonight. Very excited to show our progress with you. I'll pull up my screen here in just a minute. Okay, so we have a couple of things to review today. One, we just wanted to review the schedule. I give you all an update of where we stand relative to the design, and show you where we landed with schematic design, and then, of course, go through the cost estimate and town budget relative to the project. So as a quick summary, here's our group of project participants. Again, I'm Brett Benson, principal in charge of the project at UTIL. My associate, Nicole Ramey, presented to the PPBC last night. So we're kind of splitting our evening meeting duties, but she's very much involved in all of the details of the project. And relative to the overall timeline for capital improvement projects, we're, you know, advancing very steadily, as you can see here. This, you know, goes back to the space study that we started at the beginning of last year, and will continue on to construction, knock on wood, next year. And we've just completed the first of three design phases, which is schematic design. It's the least detailed part of the design, but sets out all of the important principles for the project, identifies the scope of work that will be undertaken as part of the project, and will lead us into the subsequent design phases of design development, excuse me, design development, which is coming up next. And we'll have another cost estimate associated with that. And then the phase that's called construction documents, which is really broken up into two phases, and we'll have another cost estimate close to the end prior to bidding. And all of that is leading us so that we can put the project out to bid and have a firm number from a general contractor by the May 6th town meeting, which will lead to a construction phase that will start sometime in the summer. I'll next talk about where we've landed with schematic design. And again, just want to emphasize that we're still, this is the earliest phase of the design process, and there are many details to work out. You might have some detailed questions that I can't answer for you tonight, but we'll definitely take note, and the next time we meet, hopefully, we'll be able to answer some of them. This is a diagram that we showed to you when we all last met, which was in August, relative to the teen area, and breaking up really into a few zones. The first identified is a kind of lounge space, a place where when teenagers come into the space, they can feel comfortable at ease. Maybe it's a little more social. There's a place to play board games and have kind of louder activities. That's identified here in this red color. And then we identified adjacent to that, a group study area. So again, a place that maybe is a little bit louder, where kids who are using the space can talk back and forth and not feel too self-conscious about that. And then finally, a craft area and cafe zone, where all of our flooring materials will be set, so that it can be a little bit messier in that area, and make it for a very easy cleanup. As we've talked before, having a place to eat is one of those top things that, where it was identified during our space needs study, especially relative to the teen users of the library. And then this fourth space, which we've identified as a quiet study area, as a kind of counterpoint to the louder, more vibrant, the kind of exciting hum that will happen in the lounge and group study, giving a place where if people who are using the space want a place to be focused and quieter, well, we're providing that for them in the area that is the current young adult area in the library. And one important change that we also discussed in August is that it was very important, I think, to many of the trustees and to the library staff, that we preserve this area identified in this reddish-orange color to the left of the stair, so that there was space for people to walk around the stairs on both sides, so as not to overly cramp the art gallery wall that is off to the plan right of this stair. And so that did remove some square footage that we had allocated for the young adult area from the space needs study. And what we've done is we've actually increased the footprint ever so slightly of the proposed young adult renovation to make up for that loss next to the stair. And you can kind of see those two items balanced here. So in terms of the plan where we landed, we've, it was Option 1B. It's the, you know, a second variant of Option 1, of which there were other options that we had looked at with Rob and his staff. But this was the preferred scheme where we landed, and you can see still the zones are very much defined as we had it in that color-coded diagram. There are two points of entry to the libraries or to the young adult area. One is from the southern planned south area, overlooking from the current reference desk area. The second point of entry is to the north of that stair, near the craft and cafe entry zone area. And I'll just walk you through some of the components of the plan, and we have a floor plan version and also kind of overhead three-dimensional version to illustrate to you as well. So starting from this entry moment, you walk into the space, and there is a lounge zone that is defined by bookshelves and by seating. This will be more comfortable seating, some of that will be a kind of built-in banquet style seating with tables that can be pushed together or pulled apart, depending on the needs of the particular users in that space at that time. And then potentially, a softer seating area with sofas and maybe an ottoman in that space. The goal is really to make it feel comfortable and social and a very vibrant kind of center space within the library. Just beyond that is a librarian's desk. We know how important it is for librarians to supervise this space when it's in use. And this point will give very good sightlines to both of the entry doors. Will allow the library to oversee the craft cafe area and also look over the lounge space and have views as well into the quiet study area. We know that, you know, sightlines are just so important in libraries in general, and especially in spaces where the teens are going to be occupying them. Just to the left of that lounge is a group study area, and these are identified as kind of booth seating with two facing benches and a shared table. There's four of those identified here. And then to the right of that, another banquet-style seat with tables that can be pushed together, pulled apart, depending on the needs. So in this zone, potentially, a group of teens could push all the tables all together and work on a large group project, or they can be pulled apart individually. And then again, there's the quiet study area. We are preserving the existing glass partition that is in place in the library now. We're adding doors to that, so that it can be closed off for additional acoustic privacy. And we're proposing a series of new furniture and built-in woodwork, millwork to that space. Some of them are going to be loose furniture study pods with taller, potentially taller partitions to them, and suitable for individual study. And along this west-facing wall, the one that is, gets quite warm in the summertime, we're proposing a series of carols with some wood screening element that I'll get into a little bit later. And then finally, a kind of laptop bar on the right-hand side of this plan, overlooking the front door down below. In terms of the distribution of the shelving, we're proposing shelving really to help identify and define some of these seating zones, and also be quite convenient for browsing. We want to make sure that the collection in that space is, is continuous and very easy to browse, and so you can see along both of these edges, hopefully you're seeing my mouse, along both of these edges, a series of bookshelves, some of them are lower, some of them are higher, to help identify the space. And that's where the majority of the collection will be located. And then at the perimeter of some of these program areas, additional shelving as well. You can see on this diagram how the different components of the young adult collection are parsed out in terms of the shelving. Some of these are lower, some of these are higher. I think maybe when we get to the three-dimensional view, it'll be a little bit easier to see. And you can see here on our seating data here, we've increased the number of seats pretty significantly from the existing, which I think is just a couple of dozen. We're approaching 90 seats in the proposed. So this is a three-dimensional view of the library space. It's as if we took the roof off of the library and we're peering down into the teen area. So to orient everybody to the plan, this is that double-door, new entryway into the teen space. Here is the stair that takes you down to the first floor. And just off of the page here is the art gallery wall. And so you can, hopefully you can see it's big enough on the screen where you all are located. There's a kind of mix of low and high shelving. We've kept the shelving down low at the entry point, so that there's a sense of spaciousness when you walk in. And then the shelving gets a little bit higher as you get deeper into the space. There is quite a bit of collection that we're trying to accommodate in this space, and so that's one of the things that we've been working with Rob and his staff and Hank as well, in terms of finding the right balance of number of shelves, the height of those bookshelves, and maintaining sightlines and a sense of spaciousness. And so you can see, again, these are the four major components. There's this lounge space, which is ringed by bookshelves, and then a low partition wall, the librarian's desk right in the center of the space, the group study on the wall overlooking Rosemary Street, and this quiet study area. And so this is the wall facing off to the west, the one that gets quite overheated in the summertime. And maybe, hopefully you can see it on your screen, what we're proposing is a series of wood screens that extend up and provide some shading and some sun control when you're seated in that space. And here's rounding things off, here's the laptop bar, and again, that craft and cafe. And this is the same plan, but rotated 180 degrees. So now we're kind of hovering outside of the library, just over Rosemary Street. These are those study carols with the wood screens on that west-facing wall. And you can see, again, all those major components, including that lounge right in the center and the librarian's desk here. Just to give you a little bit of a flavor of that kind of wood screen sunshade that we've, that I was just mentioning, these are some precedent images that we've put together to show different ways that we could articulate that screening element. We haven't designed it yet right now, it's just an idea, but we think that it could actually be a very beautiful addition to that space to help modulate the copious amounts of sunlight that come in from that west-facing space and give a nice warm glow as the sun reflects off of the wooden elements of that space.
I have a quick question for you, Brett.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Enclosing the quiet area, is that meant to be like a floor-to-ceiling glass wall with doors?
Yeah, so in this plan, you can see that wall here. That's the existing wall that's in the space. So there's a, there's that glass wall that exists, and then just beyond it, there's a kind of ring of bookshelves and seating that are from the original construction about 20 years ago. Well, we're going to take out that inner ring of bookshelves, but preserve the glass wall that's there. Currently, there's just an opening, it's sized for two double doors. And we are proposing to add new doors within that space, so that you can close it off and really have a quiet space for people to study in.
Hopefully, yeah, I didn't remember us talking about the reuse of the gospel.
Right, and I think that's something actually that probably has come up in the course of schematic design, as we looked at different options for laying out the program within the space that's there. Is it, the glass wall's in very good shape. I think it's a good cost savings option for us to keep it in place, and it has a nice, it adds a nice character to it.
Michael.
I just wanted to know, in that, in that quiet space there, is there something insulating the walls, or is there just a?
Soundproofing.
Soundproofing or anything like that, or is it high in the sky?
To insulate the walls from the outside or between spaces within the library?
Like within the spaces between, like is there, where these, like when I was looking at the schematic and I'm looking at that line across, I'm looking at it 3D now, I can kind of see that it's like, looking at it from just that perspective, I thought maybe there was like a, some kind of insulation there. But now knowing that there's some kind of partition doors that might.
Yes.
Gated.
Yeah, so, and, you know, sorry, we've, we've been liberal in how we've edited this drawing, just to try to make it a little bit, give you a clearer view into the space. But maybe if you can follow where my mouse is on your screen, this is the location of that existing glass wall between the current young adult area and the general collection of the library. That's the component that we're proposing to keep in place. I think it will give you, give users of the space a good amount of acoustic privacy from one side to the other. It will not be whisper quiet if there's a lot of noise happening on one side of the wall and then nothing happening on the other side. But there will be generally, as when the space is occupied, there's a certain amount of noise that's generated, even when you're doing a quiet study, people turning pages, the HVAC systems and so on. So I think it will feel meaningfully different in the quiet area than out in the more social space beyond that.
I have two more questions.
Yeah, yeah, so I love how you handled the, creating the space, designing the space on the left side, I guess, of the staircase, so that there's more than one access to the back half of the library. Thank you, it looks perfectly nicely done. And my one, just as I spent time looking at this today, the one question that comes into my mind is the lounge space, it seems very, has an awful lot of furniture and shelves. It seems like, especially once you add in the banquet couch type seating that you're discussing, it seems like it's going to be pretty cramped in there, especially with that, if you're walking in from the Highland Avenue side entrance, there's that big, I guess that's shelving, that's, as you go through the entrance on the left, there's shelving. It just seems.
Yes.
Describing that area rather a lot, so that it's not going to have that open feel where kids can wander around and chat to each other, but instead is, feels a little cramped. So I don't know if there's any way of moving furniture or shelving to get a more open spacious or even connecting it with the craft, you know, the craft area is also a talking area. So that's my one concern, is that it looks like it's sort of crowded with furniture and shelves and lounge area for the.
Can I, can I ask a related question? I'm just curious, do we anticipate in the lounge area that there would be a television screen where they do video games and things like that? That's, that's part of, that's part of what you're imagining, some big screen TV of some sort there? Okay.
I, I also have similar concerns about the lounge area and craft cafe. You'd mentioned that the craft cafe, you're going to have an area, like the flooring is going to be easily cleanable, and the, I'm assuming the furniture will be easily cleanable. And that's easily, I can, I can imagine that that will easily spill over into the lounge area, where the kids will also eat and drink there as well. And then my second concern, having to do with the crowding, and I'm sure you guys have expertise in this, but this feels very tight to me from like an ADA standpoint in terms of kids that are in wheelchairs or in, you know, are using crutches or whatever to get around, especially the group study area and the quiet study area, feel to me, looking, especially looking at the furniture that you guys picked, that they're not going to have nearly the accessibility that you would have at just big open tables.
So several.
Those are all great questions, and I think, you know, kind of reveals that we're still in these, this early phase of the details, including selecting the furniture. So all of the furniture you see here are really placeholders, they're not intended to be a particular recommendation. And that, so we'll take all of those comments to heart as we start to really fine-tune the size of the furniture, the quantity of it. I think, you know, we're, we want to find that right balance between having the space feel open and welcoming and kind of capture the overall flavor of the existing library, which just feels very open and light-filled, but make sure that we're providing more seating, adequate shelving, and checking all the boxes in terms of the program area. I do think that the lounge will feel nice if it's not, I wouldn't call it cramped, but it should feel dense in that there's a kind of vibrancy to it. And there are other areas, like the quiet study and even the group study, where it can feel more spread out. And even within this, you know, smaller kind of microcosm of the library, that's going to be this teen area, that there can be those moments of where you feel like it's okay to be a little bit louder, that there's a pleasant density to it, and then there are areas where it's more spread out, it's a little more private, and definitely conducive to quieter study and quieter use of the library.
Can I just want a question, this may be.
Yes.
There are actually going to be walls around this as well, so like on the exterior walls, where there's the doorway into, from, from the Highland Avenue side, for example, is that like a, I don't know, six, eight-foot wall that the shelves are then going to be up against, or is that just a schematic that it looks like there's a wall there, and it's just like you're dividing the space that way?
So there is intended to be a wall in this space that's a little bit higher. The idea is that in future phases, that might open up areas for smaller meeting rooms or study rooms, which is definitely a need in the library, one that we heard loud and clear during the space needs phase. And so we want to give ourselves the possibility in future phases for that to be accommodated. In the interim, there could certainly be shelving along this wall, and/or any number of uses along this wall. It is a, sections where there are a solid wall with glass up above, and maybe that, it's hard to see in the image, but that's what we're proposing in this section, and then other areas where that wall is lower, so that you can have more views into the space. Certainly along the staircase, that low wall is no higher than the guardrail that's around the existing stair, and you'll have more views in. We know that it's important to have this space overall acoustically isolated from the rest of the library, and so that's why we're proposing floor-to-ceiling partitions, some of them glass, some of them solid. The one other thing I wanted to mention is that the benefit is that this space is already here, and so in the next design phases, we can measure out exactly where some of these zones are going to go, and invite anybody who's curious about the relative sizes of things and location, that we can indicate that with tape on the floor, and just kind of test out exactly, does it feel big enough, does it feel too cramped? And we'd be very happy to do that in the next design phases.
I think that'd be great to have a tape it out day.
Right.
See some other folks at the library. Rob, you had a question?
Actually, my question wasn't answered, I was just going to ask about whether all the partitions are floor-to-ceiling, and it sounds like all of the outside ones are. I really like the overall plan. I was just thinking, you know, the lounge is going to be kind of a naturally louder space, whether or not there's a TV in there or sofa, it's just kind of cozy and people are going to congregate there. So, you know, it's good to hear that the walls are going to be floor-to-ceiling. Are there any other measures that can be taken to help reduce the transmission of sound from that lounge area outside the teen area?
Yeah, so I think the number one thing is going to be having that floor-to-ceiling partition, so that there aren't pathways for noise to transmit. Another component of this work will be reworking the HVAC system, so that, you know, that it's properly zoned, it's not zoned in this way now, there, the floor-to-ceiling partition is just in that area that we've labeled quiet study, and the rest is all open. So part of this work will be reconfiguring that system, and that will also help us reduce pathways through ventilation duct work of sound transmitting from one space to another. And then just overall, making sure that we're choosing materials within the teen area that are sound absorptive, so that it doesn't get too noisy in that space. And that will just help keep the overall noise level manageable before it transmits out outside of that space.
Got it, thanks.
Michael?
Just one more, just another question. What will, I don't know if you can compute it, but I'm not sure what the capacity for how many people are able to be in these areas. Is there like a, an idea of what that capacity might be? Because, you know, for D Ellen or somebody might have to have a clicker, and if it's, if it's something where it becomes too much, how much is too much, or what is most comfortable? Is there a range, basically is what I'm asking?
Yep, so there are a couple ways of answering that. The first way to answer is we've identified 89 seats in the space, and again, that number might fluctuate up and down as we get more fine-grained with the furniture selection. But that's kind of like the maximum capacity for people who are seated in this space. I think you could add a few more to that count for people who are browsing the collection, or maybe taking part in other programs, so they don't necessarily need to have a seat. In terms of the building code and egress requirements, that is far less than you could theoretically have in that space according to. Um that is far less than you could theoretically have in that space according to the building code. Uh we've accommodated for two exits to make sure that uh there are safe egress uh both in case of uh a fire emergency or any other kind of emergency that um uh public institutions need to deal with these days. Um and so, you know, that, that number is, is going to be much higher. We haven't done that calculation yet, but that's probably in the couple of hundred uh people that you could in theory have in this space. I can't imagine a scenario where you would actually have that many. Uh but that would be the kind of um on paper number that you'd be able to accommodate.
Question for, for you and Hank, do we actually have a, a stage in the review process that that uh addresses Josh's questions about accessibility? Like, do we have a, a way that that's, you know, handled by the PBBC in their, in their review? Or do we have code that we uh that we inherit from the state or from federal government in order to review that part of the design?
Yeah, I, I think in general, um the architect has laid it out, so at least to my eye. All of the primary pathways appear to be handicapped accessible. Um it may be clearer in the plan view uh to see the aisle widths. Um and turning radii, so on and so forth. We will need to look at whether it's necessary to have some um push handles uh for automatic opening doors uh into the space. It's not absolutely required, but it might be convenient. And um in, in each of the alcoves where there are books. Um I believe you have your five foot turning radius. So, yeah, so, so the architectural team has kept that in mind as they've been laying the whole place out, it to my eye.
That, that's correct Hank, and that's something that we'll continue to keep our eye on as we develop the fine grain dimensions of all of these things. All of the spaces will be uh fully accessible according to the state and federal regulations. Um and that will include uh like Tank said, uh five foot turning radius for folks who are in a wheelchair to be able to get into each of these alcoves and turn around. Uh but also wide enough walking path uh or uh accessible route. So that all of these spaces are accessible for people of all sorts of mobility. Uh we wanna make sure that this is really universally accessible um to anybody who's, who's interested in using it.
And, and the carols, for instance, you could pull, just pull the chair back and then have a wheelchair could easily get into that. That space in the banquet seating uh could, could be at the end of the table. Uh so I, I think there are many, many options for wheelchair access. But that's a very good question.
That's right, and we'll even in some of these seating areas, uh as the plans develop, we'll indicate which areas are uh have wheelchair clearances and then uh so and indicate that in the floor plan, so it's very visible to everybody. Um which spaces are specifically designated for those uh who are in wheelchairs.
Thank you. I think we can move forward now. Appreciate your answering our questions.
We're close to the end, um and we're about to get to the fun stuff, which is the money. Um but uh the one thing I wanted to say is uh, you know, explain some of the furniture types uh that we are starting to explore for this space. Again, we haven't made any furniture recommendations, let alone any selections, but this is a little bit of the flavor of the, a type of furniture that we're envisioning at the schematic design phase. And I think I touched on most of these, but these are kind of images of each one, uh just to give you a, a sense of what we're talking about when we say, for example, the um soft sofa seating versus uh the banquet seating with uh some tables that could be pushed together or pulled apart uh versus some of these carols that you see um over here in the plan. So I'll move along now uh to the cost estimate and our budget. And wanted to start with uh the first component of this, which is the, what we call the FFNE, that's the, really the furnishings and the equipment. Um and these numbers, we continue to refine them uh working with Hank and Rob to get these um to the right amount. This number might be a little bit different from what's uh in your packet and what we presented at the PPBC last night. A very astute member of the commission pointed out, we had a math error, so we've corrected that um here. Uh and again, we're just in schematic phase, so this is very early. In the next phase of our work, we'll continue to refine this number. Um the furniture, the FFNE is really broken into three components, so that's the, the furniture. That's kind of the loose furnishings uh that you saw in the plan, like those quiet study areas of a sofa and all the chairs that go with it. Uh there's a shelving component here. Uh we are going to investigate reusing some of the existing shelving, if that's possible. That's something that's gonna take a little bit more of a kind of hands-on uh investigation on our part, as well as consulting uh with some fabricators uh about whether it would be cost effective uh to reuse it. And then lastly, that's the uh equipment budget that we're showing here in this line item. All of those get totaled up and we add a contingency onto that number, so it's just over four hundred thousand dollars um in the budget. Uh as a parallel process, um on our consultant team, we have a professional cost estimator. Uh that is, oh, their company name is Alana. Um and the town also has a third-party cost estimator that um they employ uh as well. And this is really to get um two expert opinions uh on a probable cost for the project. Based on this very schematic level that we're in now. Um and you can see here that there are, our estimator and the town's estimator came up with numbers that were a little bit apart. They're about two hundred thousand dollars apart. Um in our estimate, we were presuming about one point seven million and the town's was at one point five. So we've all collectively decided to meet in the middle as our uh basis for moving on into design development of one point six million dollars. And what that number means is that's what we expect at this point for the value of the construction contract to be uh when a general contractor bids and is signed up um or it didn't. That is one component of the total project costs, which I'll show in the next slide. Hank, it looks like you want to interject something.
Can I just ask, how does that compare to what we originally budgeted for this space?
Uh we, we were in the one point eight uh range, so um. But I, I think it's important to point out that the difference in opinion between the two uh cost estimators um really would likely show us the range of bids that we would get uh in a competitive bid scenario. The fewer bidders we get, unfortunately, usually the higher the cost is. Um and uh it's a relatively small job. So we're gonna have to try to target the right contractor to, to go after this. And I, I think there'll be a fair amount of interest, but those of you who have gone through public bidding. Uh we will likely have filed sub bids and then um general bids. And will likely have electric HVAC, fire suppression, flooring. And uh acoustical ceilings, all as filed sub bids, maybe painting as well.
Maybe painting, yeah.
So um that, that's a process we have to go through and um and public bidding these days has slowly gotten more competitive. But we really will have to wait and see what those numbers come in at, at the bids, bid stage. Um and as, as a result, I think that there'll be some components where we may want to do add alternates or deduct alternates. Uh so we have some flexibility in the award stage.
That's, yeah, exactly right. And um one other component that I'll um highlight here is this uh design contingency light item, uh which is an important uh component. This is money in the cost estimate for items that we haven't yet designed. Uh and because again, we're just finishing the first of three design phases. We know that we will find out more information as we get more detailed and there will be items that uh we're going to draw down from that contingency. When we get to that eighty percent construction documents um estimate, this number will be close to zero. It won't quite be zero because even then we'll still have that uh twenty percent less uh left to design. Uh but the idea is that bid time, uh that number goes down to zero and all of this money gets reassigned up into each of the component parts uh of the construction.
Uh question, how does this number that you've, you've determined this one point six roughly? Um how does that then factor into the design development phase? Like, how do you, like, does that number play a rule, role in terms of what you're doing in terms of the design work?
Yes, that's a great question as a way to segue into the next slide and the one after that, Airheart. So thanks for setting me up. One is we, in our cost estimate, we identified a number of alternates uh so that we could some of them will be used for our own use to identify uh cost variables in terms of different material selections. And some of them were around um options uh for HVAC systems and other components. There are uh two alternates that we've identified here that really enhance the interior comfort of the space. Um so that is number one, some of that interior screening that we were um showing you earlier to provide a, that sense of enclosure and control player within the teen space. And then the second is um upgrading some of the mechanical systems above and beyond the kind of very baseline component that we had uh in the estimate. And working with Hank and the town uh as well as Rob, we've identified a couple of things. This is a big spreadsheet, so hopefully um nobody's eyes are glazing over too much looking at it. Uh but I'll try to walk it, walk you through and the, the first column I wanna highlight, everybody, is on the far right-hand side. And this indicates our schematic design reconciled estimate, taking that average number. And I'll just go through line by line what each one means. So this is the about one point six million dollar construction contract uh that we anticipate um signing. That's kind of where we are right now. As Hank said, that number could go up or down based on the number of bids that we receive. There is uh an owner's contingency that is held on the side for unexpected change orders. Uh this is an existing building, there will be some demolition. There will undoubtedly be some surprises uh that we find once we open up walls and ceilings. And so there's some money held to the side to, to pay for those. Uh there is the furniture number and the equipment number, so those were the numbers that we identified earlier on one of the slides. And then there are some moving costs uh set aside as well uh to move things out of the space um and then move them back in. And then there are those soft costs that help pay for the uh architects and engineers who labor very hard on this project. Um and all of that gets totaled up to this line item, which is two million, seven hundred sixty one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Which sounds very precise, but again, these are all estimates. Um for now, that gets rounded to the two point seven seven five million dollars. And in our discussions um with the town, they've identified an additional hundred thousand dollars um that is partially covering an increase from the feasibility estimate and partially covering some of those um alternates that we just identified to enhance the interior comfort uh of the library. And so that totals up to a total project cost of two point eight four million dollars. Of which four hundred and fifty four thousand has already been allocated uh at the twenty twenty two town meeting. That's to kind of get us through the design phase and an anticipated request at a town meeting in uh twenty twenty five of just shy of two point four million dollars. And so that's kind of the, how that all adds up uh in tabular format. Um the furniture and the shelving is a, a really important uh component uh that we wanna delve into during the design development phase. The quality of the furniture, um the amount of shelving that is reused versus new will be a very much a kind of character defining element of the space. And so we wanna make sure that we're looking very carefully at um finding the right um pieces of furniture for the space, uh but living within uh the budget that the library and the town is able to allocate to it. Why don't I take a breath there and Hank, if you wanted to throw anything else in there, please feel free.
Yeah, we, we had some preliminary discussions, um Rob and I did with town manager and assistant town manager and we had been carrying um for the anticipated requested annual town meeting in next uh May. Um two point two eight six million. And based upon this, we're looking at a two point three eight six million, so an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars. Um that I believe Rob has already put into the capital improvement plan. But it'll be a discussion with um the finance uh committee and others uh moving forward. Um and we, we have factored in um in the, the base cost estimate some cost escalation to the midpoint of construction. That's typically what the cost estimators do. They come up with their base numbers and then they escalate it to the midpoint of construction. So uh if trustees are asked about the warrant article, why has it increased? It's in part because the, the cost estimates we've gone through so far um would imply that we need that additional money.
All right, um what's next? Uh when will we hear from you next?
So next is we have, are embarking on our design development phase. And if you forgive me, hopefully it won't make you too dizzy. I'll pull up our schedule again just to give a, kind of everybody a graphic view of that. Uh so we started design development uh today. Uh after our PPBC meeting last night, um we will be moving forward to the middle of November um with that design and we'll be moving in uh to the cost estimate to confirm all of that. Uh so the, when that ends is kind of mid-December. And I think we had uh targeted uh the next trustees meeting of early January to review where we landed relative to design development and confirm um the costs uh associated with that um that we get from the cost estimate.
Right, and I see a PBBC meeting before then um in early December. And so if that, if that doesn't align with the trustee meeting, I can always circulate those materials uh between meetings so that we can all have a chance to look at them.
Plus, isn't there, what is the juncture at which the finance committee meets with the library? Um to look over, I guess the library budget, but I presume they would also be looking at this. Uh will be coming up at town meeting. So there is that moment when the, the finance committee has to uh weigh in. And I think that's more like December, isn't it, for the costs?
Or January, I think they began and, and since um and, and the select board will also need to weigh in uh on this, so um we haven't orchestrated um those discussions yet. It, it may be in December or slashed in January.
Right, I just wanna make sure that was on the radar screen.
Yeah, I wonder Hank, could you work with um with Brett and Rob to, to perhaps estimate those, those dates and add them to the, the project schedule calendar that we're uh working from?
Okay.
I just have one other question. Is there, I see like between January, there's no there's nothing for us as the trustees to look over everything as like a final look over before it goes to town meeting on May sixth? Is that something that should be on there as well, like in our March or April meeting or something like that? Like, even though it's in the middle of the bidding process anyway, I mean, we won't have a final bid, but. I don't know if that's something we need to or not, I'm just throwing it out there.
I, I think that we would wanna check in, um certainly, Airheart, I'll, I'll leave it up to you. Uh you will see the process as we go through with the PBBC. And um perhaps um in February uh there could be an update provided.
Or March, cause that'll be the end, March after the cost estimate's fully done, I think.
Yeah, um cause it, it would be good for us to have a fresh. To have a fresh review of everything, because we're also going to then start lobbying our fellow. Town members to, to endorse the plan. And we'll probably write a public letter. To the select board in support of it, into town meeting. And so it might be helpful to put something on the calendar around that.
Yeah, I definitely agree. Josh, that we should have sort of a moment at which the trustees say, yes, we're good with this. And so we now, you know, since we're the ones that need to advocate for funding and several of our town meeting members. You know, so we want to know that we have sort of a, a formal or informal sign off with the plan and that budget request.
Make sure we're all on the same page.
I wonder if it should be March, so that way like we can put together a letter to approve at the April meeting to then.
Ideally, that's all finalized before the bidding starts, whenever.
Well, right, but, but looking at, looking at the schedule they have up there, it looks like the final cost estimates. Like the bidding starts March third, so I'm wondering if. We should look at it like, because our meeting in March has got to be like March.
Well, that February twenty fourth PPBC meeting, we would have, the PPBC needs to approve that final cost estimate, which would then go into the bid.
We can see it in the February meeting and just sort of get a consensus. That might work.
Yeah, I, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll look. It's eighty percent. I mean, the, the drawings that they're putting together at CDs. Get into a lot, lot of architectural and other details. Mechanical, not too much plumbing, but certainly electrical. And we would be reviewing those as we go along with Rob. I, I think it may be appropriate to find a time in. December or early January, just to, well, we have an early January update, so that would give you. The update from both design development and the cost estimate from design development. And that, that then is the basis. They're beginning to work on all the details within the CDs.
I guess what I'm advocating for is something where. We can have the final plans, that then we then have the ability to advocate to the town meeting for. Even if, even if at that point, like it's set in stone what the, what the cost is going to be, that's fine. But we should be able to then understand what the cost is and why we're advocating to our fellow.
Well, we could even, we could do that while the bidding is happening.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm saying.
No, because we're not, we don't have like a role as a, as this board of trustees to approve, you know, like the electrical schematics. And so, and so even just having an overview of what, what did we complete by the end of that process? What's being, what's being bitted on right now? You know, how do we incorporate those, those numbers and, and, and what we understand? The final result of the design process into our advocacy.
Yeah. And what, what I often do is to work with the user group to put together FAQs. And a lot of the information that has, you've just been presented with a schematic design. Those, those I think are the, the level of information that often oftentimes get, gets presented at town meeting. And why you need to do it, all the issues related to sound. Brett, you didn't mention that we're probably doubling the number of seats for the, for the youth.
Right. Yeah. Yes. I think having a lot of talking points that we develop later in the process will be important. For everybody just to be able to explain the project, justify the cost, advocate for it and so on.
Yeah. And if, if trustees, you've, you've all been through this before, particularly town meeting members. If you have specific questions that you know people will be asking. Write them down and we'll work with you to start answering those. And the sooner the better. I'd like to have those drafted by January, in fact. Before, before meetings with. Fincom.
I'll, I'll make sure that that's on our agenda to do in the next two months. So you, by January.
And that, that also gives you your talking points. And usually, as you know, there's what a five minute presentation that's allowed. And, and more data can be sent out with the, with the things that get sent to town meeting members. And it's not clear to me whether this will be in the, the. Annual town meeting or the special town meeting within the town meeting. That's a decision that. Town manager, I guess, and finance director make. I'm not quite sure how those decisions are made. Sometimes it's helpful when we have bids coming in just prior to town meeting. To put it into the special town meeting, because that allows for minor modification if necessary.
All things we can think about comes spring. Anything else for Brett and?
No, just thank you very much, Brett. I hope that you are not coming down with something or really getting over something. Because I hear that you're, sound like you have a cold, so we thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure. Nice to be with you tonight. Thanks so much for your time.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Bye now.
Thank you, Hank.
All right. It is, it is. Well, it's a big deal.
Yeah, it's a huge deal.
All right. So we're a little behind schedule, about thirty minutes. But we're gonna, we're gonna make this work. So Rob, director's report.
Thank you, Eric. Some highlights from the list of highlights. In September, the children's department celebrated Talk Like a Pirate Day, which is always fun. It's always fun just to take things from. Our culture and tie the library into them, make that connection, you know, to show people that, you know. Even when you're celebrating Talk Like a Pirate Day, the library matters, you know. Check out some pirate themed books. So Wendy did a great job doing that for us. The fourth bullet, I just want to give a shout out to Lucia for all the great work she did with. This list of local organizations that she set up for free programming for the children's department. Including the meet and police with the storytime with, with Rocket coming next month. So that is amazing amount of work and amazing. Message from the community to value the library to provide free programming for our kids.
And it's deeply aligned with the strategic plan work about connecting ourselves to the community.
Yes, yes. And the variety is fantastic. The variety of topics. Moving on to the reference departments. The first bullet is a big thing, which happened suddenly when Danielle upgraded the. Computer that connects to the public printer in the reference department. The old computer was in two thousand thirteen. So once she upgraded it. All of a sudden, the money machine from Jamex did not communicate anymore with it. So. We took that as an opportunity to change things up, as you can see here. Tended the friends monthly meeting last week to talk to them about this pilot project that we want to start. For October, November and December to provide free printing of up to twenty five pages a day per patron. And in addition to that, if that pilot project is successful and doesn't break the bank. It's something we would continue. And the big change would be, we would get the friends out of. The business of. Funding the public printing and collecting nickels and dimes from the public.
Which they're comfortable with.
Oh, right. Jay was there. Yeah.
Getting out of that.
So that was great. We will then have to pick up those expenses within our. Line item for office and circulation supplies. There's been some push in the past couple of years that we think we can. Work with those expenses and make a case to increase that my item by twenty six. To take on that very basic operational expense for our patrons. Within our budget. So. So the Jamex machine is, that one is open.
Anybody want one?
Yeah. So that was interesting, but it all just happened very quickly because we upgraded a computer and then the dominoes started to fall.
But I really, I want to, I want to commend you and the library staff of actually kind of changing the paradigm. When, when presented with that technology, technology was should be like, well, actually, maybe we just don't need. To have people pay for it.
Which is consistent also with the mission in terms of accessibility and serving the public.
Yeah, it's sort of in line with, you know, no overdue fines and just public libraries moving away from. Having our patrons give us money. You know, so this is a pilot project, so for the next few months we'll see how it goes. But if it is successful in the sense that we can afford to do it, you know, we may just. Have free printing. Right on twenty five pages a day. It also gets our staff out of the business of handling money. And having those awkward interactions and as was mentioned, you know, some patrons having to. Accidentally print something and realize we don't have the money to pay for something and we're put in this situation where. It's just awkward and unnecessary. So. Yes, so thank goodness for two thousand thirteen computers. But the friends have been fantastic and they stepped in when we needed them way back when, because. The word was at the meeting that back then, the town I needed said the library could not be involved in a commercial enterprise. So that the friends stepped in to provide a printer. So that money could be collected to pay for the printer. So as always, they've just always been there to help us out and been great friends. So, and they completely understood this and were happy. The money that they were collecting was covering the expenses. It wasn't a profit. Center for them. So it should not harm their abilities to provide support for us in the future.
Is that the, for the cost of paper and cartridges?
Yes, the total cartridges and the paper. The public printer itself.
Right.
When it dies. A big expense, but not an operational expense, like the total of the paper. And moving on to technical services department. Shifting of the nonfiction, if you haven't seen it, you may want to just take a look to see what is occurring there. And it's, it's really fantastic. They've done a lot of work, as noted here in this last sentence, that in one week, they've already accomplished forty five percent of the task. And they're creating a much more accessible and vibrant collection of nonfiction work for our patrons to browse. There's display shelves within each run of shelving. There's room for growth. It's much more inviting.
I've noticed the difference, yes.
Yeah, so once we get done, it's just going to be fantastic. The building maintenance staff have been excellent in taking off the top. Shelving so we can create more space to interfile the oversized works, which used to live. In the dungeon of the long shelf and nobody ever touched them. But now they're interfiled where they belong and can be discovered. So it's just been a great effort between technical services, the reference department and building maintenance to come together to do this. Great thing for the collection of the patrons and, yeah. Check it out.
Yeah, yeah. Been watching it sort of unfold and I haven't completely followed what's going on, but so this is a good explanation.
Yeah.
Big job.
It's, it's been, it's just a really nice way for us to sort of. Move to, even I would say better than like a bookstore model, because we have even more like front facing displays. Within our nonfiction collection now to highlight newer works that, you know. Graduate from our section upstairs, but haven't been around for years so that people can still discover these great works that we've curated for the collection. So. That's my nerdy library itself, getting really excited about shifting. And it should have, we'll, we'll know, patrons will actually tell us. So in a year from now, when we look at the, the data. We'll know if. It worked.
Yeah.
So that's exciting. Moving on to technology archives department, Danielle besides being the. Helping to run the reference department, she's done a lot of great work in September. One big project she's working with Mark Nessius, who's the head of the town of Metamorphone Department. On a phone upgrade project for this building, which is long overdue and we're all looking forward to that. So. She's taking lead big time on that. Yesterday, the Boston Public Library staff showed up and took away all our entire collection of Metamorphone annual reports. Maybe back to the mid nineteenth century for a free digitization project.
Oh, wow, wow.
So we're really excited about that. So. Once that's done, once that's done, we'll be able to. See the whole entire collection online and search, you know, with the OCR that will be incorporated to the work. Search for ancestors' names across reports and it's just going to be an amazing resource.
What will happen to the physical copies?
They'll be returned to us and live in our archives. So those could be available for use by patrons, but having it digitized just makes it. It'll be, you can be in Germany and checking it out and whatnot.
Now, where are the archives? Where's the space for the archives?
The archives, the local history room.
Oh, it's going to stay, so it's going to stay right where it already is.
Yes, it's just left to be digitized. Then they'll return it when they're done.
I wasn't sure of the fact that it's now available digitally, whether you need that, whether you could use that space for something other than those.
No, 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 no.
That's a requirement.
Well, no, we're stewards of the.
That's right.
Physical works too and their importance to our collection. So, yeah. Yeah, no, they come back and they live the rest of their life here with us. So it's just about ease and stick. Under personnel, I'll just go bullet by bullet. We've done a lot. That happens in September, including we hired a new part-time reference librarian, Matthew. He's here on Wednesdays and Thursdays. If you want to stop by, he works two thirty to seven. And as well as being a reference librarian, he's going to be working in support of everyone's efforts with our team, like team patrons. So we welcome him. Oh, Talbot is leaving us. Tomorrow's her last day. She's going to New York City for a, a new job and we wish her well. She's very excited about that. We're excited to have her go. She was here a short time, but it was a great addition to our staff. On the next bullets. Tomorrow, we're finishing up our interviews for the two part-time circulation assistant positions. So hopefully by the November's meeting, I'll be telling you the names of those new people who joined our team. So that's moved on well. The full-time position of reference supervisor was reposted. We went through a series of interviews with candidates when. After our initial posting and decided to repost. So that just closed at the end of last week. We reviewed the applications and are currently scheduling interviews with candidates for that position. That was what happened over the course of the next weekend. So we're moving along with that. And then the assistant director position. So there's no assistant director here today to introduce. An update on that, we had first round interviews with five candidates. We invited three candidates back for second round interviews. Two of them withdrew their names and we had a second round interview with the third candidate. After that interview on Thursday morning, we decided to. After that interview, Thursday morning, we decided to repost the position. So that went up yesterday, the reposting of the position. And we already have some new candidates that have applied in the past twenty-four hours, so that's exciting. It was first posted in August when some people may have been on vacation or what have you, we are. Hoping for a better. We're hoping for a response, but new candidates, so that's where that is.
So both the reference supervisor position and the assistant director position had to be reposted. Is that correct? Yeah. Hope to get a good flood of new quality candidates, right?
If you don't have anybody, let them know. The postings are both up on the town of Needham's career opportunities part of the website, so if you know anybody who just sent it, they'll like. Details on how to apply there.
And are most of our candidates largely kind of local or are they coming from different parts of the country?
We've had out-of-state candidates for the assistant director position and interviewed a number of them. People from down south working to. But the salary ranges for both positions are quite competitive, so. Put up those four ranges and communications about these positions and hope that. That, as well as exciting work that's happening in four phases and just being generally great, will attract a lot of people. Oh yeah, in a week or so, someone else are going to an annual conference of the New England Library Association, which is great. I'm just laughing because the next three weeks I'm just gonna be up to my balls in creating a budget for flight twenty-six with Jenna's help. And we're both gonna go to the conference, so maybe we'll be skipping the comments, just finding a table and talking budgets, so. But anyways, this will be great, so Deborah from circulation and Kelsey from circulation are going to. It's in Portland, Maine, and I love Neale, I think it's a great conference, so.
I can't even decide, I was looking at all the sessions and it's really hard.
And good vendors too, so we'll probably see some interesting furniture vendors. So, so that's great, the last bullet on this page, our staff development day, I just wanted to give you a. I know I didn't invite you, sorry, Jay, too much. But it was generally great, we did a post survey with staff that. It was well-received, so we started the day with food shots, the public health nurse Judy came and did that, so it's fun. A great breakfast. We'd already also did lunch, but then we had Christine Weasel and Christina Kozak. I went to Wayne with Pumpkin Day on Sunday, sorry. From.
Using Jenny's.
Using Jenny's services, came and did a nice session for free on de-escalation and dealing with the problem of patrons. Including scenarios, some group work, and then ended with meditation, which was really good, so. That was really nice, Christine had been at the last one in March and staff really liked her, so we invited her back to focus on this subject. After they left us, Sandy Robinson and Maureen Callahan, the Indian Council came to talk about what they do for the community and their history. Following them, Him and Chodri from Icon, the Indian community of Needham came and talked about their history and how they formed and what they do. So, and then we broke for lunch and then came back and Rob Jimmey from the fire department. He's a firefighter and then the EMT came and talked about evacuations and fire emergencies and the Q and A with. Staff were really engaged, that was fun, what came out of that was a suggestion for us to have a fire drill. So we're gonna have a fire drill.
All right.
And I'm thinking, oh, fire drill, yeah, we have to wait till the next staff development day to, to do it, and they're like, no, that's not a fire. A fire drill is like, you're open, the building's full of patrons and you have a fire drill. I'm like, wow, that's gonna be fun, so, so we're gonna have a fire drill, we'll let you know if you wanna come. And evacuate with us, but. So, so that was great, Rob.
Are you gonna tell the fire department that you're coming to fire drill? Pull the alarm one day.
Completely planned with emergency management and the fire department and they'll be here to make sure everything is done correctly and safely.
Are there notices up about where to go or anything like that?
We have a plan, I think, I'm not sure if these red guides have our specific. Tree that we're all supposed to run to or if it's, maybe as our internal document refers to the tree out on the Highland Street Park.
And I think those are for all sorts of emergencies, so there's only a little bit about evacuation. But we are up to code to have the exits marked, so rather than asking staff and patrons to memorize. Specific exit now, the, the building is designed so that it's easy then.
But for staff herself, we have a place to meet, so we can do account to make sure at least staff are survived. While we're not requiring staff to like stay in the building to make sure everybody gets out, we will check the entire library, all spaces, make sure patrons have. Are not hiding or.
And the captain goes down.
Yes.
Last one out, right?
I'm not ready to repost your position.
So, so that was great, and then after Rob, we just had an open discussion, just Q and A with staff. And then we broke for individual department meetings, followed by cleaning out of old and broken stuff. So RTS had delivered a dumpster in the morning, if you had dropped by, thinking we were open and saw a big dumpster, we. Took the opportunity to fill it and get rid of lots of stuff that. We're probably gonna have to get rid of anyways during one of these phases of construction, so we're just. Taking the opportunity to clean out, so it was a good day, you know, we've got to leave a little bit early, so. Don't, don't tell the trustees. And, or just a list of, since the September meetings, some. Meetings and things I've gone to, I don't know if there's any questions about that.
So you're all at the Harvest Fair?
Yep, Erin, Bassett, our team librarian, myself, we're at the Harvest there, and with Gay. They sat by, it was great, we were right next to the library foundation, Needham, the head table. We met, there were hundreds of people who came and we got to talk about digital services, signed the people up the library cards and. It was a nice day, the rain held on. Great, moving on, phase one, there's not much more besides what Brett shared tonight, just to let you know that. We're still doing like library work to get ready for phase one, weeding and shifting, thinking. There's a lot of library-specific planning. Around, about around this to make sure, you know, we're staying open, like.
Right.
That's. We have a plan for that.
That's a logistical job.
Yeah, so we're doing that thinking and planning, but continuing to get ready for the end of next June when the first hammers start.
I'm sure that'll be quiet.
That's true, well, hopefully at seven o'clock they're done.
Building grounds, so right before you are, four of the twelve new tables that were purchased and had delivered. Last week, so they're longer, they're eight feet in length, a little bit, not as deep as the dark gray ones, but. We've welcomed so far, building maintenance staff are happy, so they replaced our oldest tables, which are now. Been retired. They were a big help with the friends three-day sale, bringing down dozens and dozens of the boats. From upstairs to this room, and as we've heard, or we will hear, the friends paid a lot of money.
Good sale.
And the masonry contractors are still around finishing up their work on patching around the building, they were here today too. The fire and structures were inspected and passed, and then we had a blinking light, Kay, you may have noticed at the end of the art gallery that.
Yes.
Has been fixed. Moving on, financial reports, state aid, there's expenses this year since our last meeting that's been paid, but I wanna tell you the most important thing about state aid is that. Last Friday, the financial report was submitted to the MBLC, that along with the heiress which was submitted in August. Are the two reports that need to be submitted as part of our certification as a public library. In order to read, receive library state aid.
Thank you.
And we passed, so.
Oh, you signed it?
So we passed, you know, we met all the standards of spending and hours of being open.
Oh, one of the things is down on the floor.
So, so that's great, so next spring we'll receive library state aid over again, so this past. Spring, we, is what sixty-nine thousand dollars we received, the budget that was just passed. State aid for public libraries has increased about ten percent or so, so we should see, you know, seventy-six thousand dollars or so next spring coming.
Great.
Great for us to possibly put some aside again for phases. Happening. So that, so thank you for all that and all the staff getting all that data together for. The reports. DPW, all the building maintenance expenses are outside of our budget, but we still need to report them. Because those expenses are on our behalf and so they were great in turning around that information for us. The trust funds, there's a lot of bills here that we've stayed out of the trust funds since last meeting and. This is because in the beginning of the fiscal year, we spend down our, the money from trust funds and from the friends. That is geared towards materials while we set up our contracts and our POs. For the operating budget that the town provides us for materials, so you see a lot of expenses here. For materials out of the trust funds. It are. Basically our normal budget, so our normal budget is where we are at, where we should be, going back to that. Still as last month this year, there's just disparity between the percentage of salaries we have spent versus it's our expenses and. As we're not fully staffed, so we're not spending as much in salaries and our expenses, we have a lot of expenses, bills that we pay. Upfront for the year, including the largest one under the expenses lineup is our membership fee for the Native Man Library. So that may seem alarming that we only have thirty-six point six percent left, but that's because we pay all this upfront. So we're at where we should be. If that's better. Moving on, our D I staff efforts in September were substantial and we're happy about that. From programming to materials that were purchased for displays as well as structural development for our staff. And those are all listed here, we also are very thankful to Icon, the Indian community of Needham. For their donation of five hundred dollars, which has allowed us to purchase materials for children, teens and adults for our collection. That celebrate Indian culture and heritage. And to see the company chart that shows the number of appearances and what we purchased. That's a part of our D I efforts here at the library. And then the new items summary report, just a couple interesting items there is just the team, I mean, the children's collection. Towards the end of that chart, you'll see that Wendy did a big weeding project for the DVDs and the CDs. So, that we. Continues in support of our normal weeding, but also the trends we see with our patrons. As well as getting ready for phase two, which is. Gonna be right around the corner.
Yeah.
You know, you know, a year from now will be in the middle of phase one construction, which means we're gonna be starting to think of phase two design. So it's not, never too early for us to get ready for the next phase, so we're happy that the children's staff is. Recognizing that moving forward to get ready. Any questions? I sort of ran through that quickly just because of the time.
Yeah, yeah, we're running all the time. Are there any questions about the circ- the circulation reports? That's the last bit of the record.
I'm sure some of you saw that, it's super interesting about the time study, about weeding, about like libraries weeding things and. People using this as a back door for banning books.
Oh, I read that.
Really interesting, it was in today's New York Times.
It's just weeding out and things just go away.
Yeah, like they use the example of, I guess there's a book that has like two gay penguins or something like that, it's like, one of the examples is banned in a lot of places. You know, the weeding methodology that libraries use, some people are using that to get rid of those books. Probably recommend it if you haven't read it.
Any questions or comments about the July and August circulation reports? All right, moving on to new business, we have a gift list to vote and accept.
We have three items here, one of them, I talked about the icon donation, we had a. Surprising hundred dollar donation from a fund, I'm just being a passenger, which is nice, but I wanna just briefly talk about. Whitney's donation of six hundred and eighty dollars, she had a school project this summer where she. Created pins and sold them and raised six hundred and eighty dollars for the library, you may have read about it in last week's, the news review.
Yeah.
Amy, we shared this with Amy and she ran with it and wrote about Whitney's project, so I'll pass this around some photographs. And some pins that she sent us and her note that accompanied the six hundred dollar and six hundred and eighty dollar check which we've already deposited. Which she wants used for books for kids, teens and adults that everybody in the library can benefit by the work that she did this summer. So that was fantastic, so those are three items that we hopefully will approve for acceptance.
So, can I get a motion to approve the gifts? Second? Well, huge thank you to all of the, the, the folks who have donated, especially Wendy.
Yes.
Yeah, fabulous, thank you so much.
And also the Indian community of Needham, that's interesting, they gave five hundred dollars for books related to India or.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful.
So Erin and Paul worked together to come up with a list for children's and teens, but also adult citizens.
Incredible.
Right.
Yeah. You know, everyone should really check out the photos. Yeah, this is fabulous, thank you so much for the, for the work. So let's. Let's have a. A vote to approve all those in favor of accepting this gift list. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, gifts are accepted. Next. Item is library closures for twenty twenty five.
Yes. So you have this in your packet. This is for calendar year two thousand twenty five, when the library is closed on holidays and some others. Special days like Thanksgiving evening or the day before Independence Day with fireworks going off across the street and we have to be out of here where the. Streets are shut down at five o'clock. So this list of holidays is the town meetings list of holidays. So what's listed here that's. Different is just sort of what I mentioned, closing at four thirty on July third because of the fireworks or Thanksgiving evening. Thanksgiving Eve, closing at five thirty. But there's nothing new or unusual here.
And two staff, two staff days included, right?
Oh, yes. Sorry, that is also. Yes, listed. And so those may, well, I guess they can't shift the rolling on that, but.
They may shift if we reapprove them.
We might have more than pirates for the day if we're not careful.
So these dates are sort of like what we've done in two thousand twenty four. So the staff are on base. Yeah, we'll see if we can use these words.
These Sunday hours in the summer reflect what was reduced?
It reflects what happens this summer. What our town halted.
That's right.
So.
Right.
Right. And there's no changes here from last year's proposal in terms of just days of the week. Yeah, right. But not in terms of total number of days or.
Right.
We won't be able to celebrate Pirate Day.
I usually track this because I.
Yes.
We had a couple of years where, well, actually just one year, twenty twenty three, where for some reason we soared. No, this is sixteen days closed and four partial closer days, early closing days. And. I started tracking it in twenty twenty three where we went up to twenty two day, full days closed, which was, I think it had partly to do with. The way the date spell around the holidays and stuff, but but also I just thought that was a big increase. So I.
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about. Like the weekends probably with Christmas and New Year's probably.
Yeah, it's happened up to like a lot more days than we normally have closed. But so this is much more consistent with our other years. So.
So can I get a motion to adopt this library closure schedule?
Move to adopt the holiday schedule as proposed.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Right. Adopted. So. Moving on to old business, library policy review.
So this will be quick. There is no update. I apologize. I haven't thought about this since the last staff. Just he's moving and I haven't thought that to tape to start on one of the long time policy was the first thing first to tackle. It's.
Long time mention. It's the season.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a long time.
I've just been busy with personnel issues and. Hopefully I can talk to Kay, we can get something for November, but the next three weeks, the FY twenty six operating budget is due. Two weeks from Friday. So. Maybe after that day.
After that.
Kay and I can put our heads together and come back in November with something, which is some progress.
Take a look at what what order we might look at things and certainly any trustees who have a concern about a policy or think that there's one that needs looking at, you know? That's more than enough.
Well, the other thing that we had talked about last week was taking the. The list that we had compiled and and doing prioritization of that based on perspectives from library staff as well as trustees in particular. Desire to work on a policy. And so we should work on that prioritization.
Yeah. Yeah, part of that will also be the last time a policy was revised or revisited.
Right. And also things sometimes percolate up from the staff. Know that there's a policy just doesn't fit what's happening in the library anymore. So that's another source.
Yeah, I think. Hey Danielle and I just talked about a couple of them today, just informally, you know, things come up and we're like. That also bubbles up to an issue, you know?
Happens in every business. There's like random policies. You're like, where did this policy come from? And someone show it to me on paper somewhere.
Yeah.
Our food policy you may see sooner than later.
Yeah, that's right.
Bubbled up.
Got it. I know one of the ones that was.
Literally bubbled up.
I know one of the ones that was named was the DX question. We need a policy on DX testing, things from the archive.
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah, and exceptionally.
Okay.
Yeah. But sometimes our patrons drive these issues of.
Sure. Definitely appreciate that.
But I apologize.
All right. So we will retain the same action items from the previous meeting going toward November. Library and Exhibits Committee Report. You are up.
So we did have a meeting September twenty third. And we. We don't have anything that needs voting tonight. So we we're basically. We have coming up, well, currently I've kind of plunked it to this amazing pen and inks. I guess they are or early prints of the. Yeah, they're incredibly detailed, interesting perspectives on our Boston skyline and institutions. And so and then coming up in November is the Needham Art Association for two months, November, December. Jumping ahead to January, we have our big exhibit for which the elephant is funding us for Robert Cheddarleaf's series of portraits of Americans who tell the truth and to talk. We have reached out to. A Boston artist, Sharon Long, who has. Sort of African African American activism themes that he does in a beautiful way. But he's unsure yet. So we don't have a commitment yet whether he's going to feel he's ready or not. And for open studio. So probably the next meeting, we may actually have a vote on through probably June and after which the construction starts. So. We won't be having art up for whatever, six months or whatever it is that that's all.
Right, because we wouldn't be responsible for.
The dust and the traffic and all the traffic will be going down that art gallery wall.
Damage.
Because, yeah, as Brett just said, tonight they're going to actually close off the passage on the left side of the staircase and the right side. Through carts and.
Could we, could we continue using the display case?
I think so. I don't see any reason because you can't keep going with it.
They are sealed, so that should not be an issue.
Yeah, so we'll have. Yeah.
And we may see if we've got something that we can put up that we don't give a damn about on the walls. Damaged, it doesn't matter.
You have something in your mind?
It could be posters. It could be posters. It could be something, but we'll put something up there.
And we didn't talk about moving some of the art that's in the teen space now, sort of teen space now into the Bosworth books. There's a few original paintings there that might, you know, some may be. More likely than others, some, you know, if you want to archive.
When the, when the construction starts, is there some way to protect like the paintings we have? Because those are priceless. So is it something we should think about?
Do we have to store it?
That they are either taken down or either.
Oh.
Covered.
I mean, they're in a completely separate room pretty far from the construction. I don't know. Hanging some kind of dust.
It's a good question.
I don't know if it's still the same HVAC system up there.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah.
But I don't know since they did the construction here, whether it's still separate or not.
Yeah, so that's.
This is a good question that we should look into.
The thing about where they're going to put the plastic. They'll put plastic sheeting around the space to try to adjust it.
Yeah.
Right. I'm sure. But just remember people will be going back and forth since it's open.
It'll be, they'll close plastic around.
But the the construction area will be closed in some kind of plastic.
Yeah, I believe so.
So that's something that.
But there's air exchange. I mean, there's some questions about mitigation that we should probably ask.
Just so it's something priceless like what we are stored for.
Yeah.
Does not get destroyed.
Other updates?
Nope, I think that's pretty much covered. We did, so no votes are.
Thank you, Kay. Macabre series updates?
So pretty much the same update as last month. We're excited at Carrie Nugent's on November tenth, which is a Sunday afternoon. At approximately two P M. She'll be speaking on asteroid hunting. Really fascinating planetary scientist and science communicator. Should be a really interesting program. And then we've got a few votes that I'm reaching out to for a spring program as well. I'll give the update on that as soon as I have it.
Great. You're going to have a poster and.
Yeah, there should be a poster coming shortly for the Giver series and also to you for.
Sounds good.
On my list.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Friends of the library.
Friends had a board meeting last week. Very happy with the success of the most recent book sale. I don't remember the exact number, more than seven thousand seventy three hundred dollars.
Wow.
Very successful. As Rob mentioned before, he attended the meeting and he discussed with them the arrangements with the printer and everyone was. On the same page and happy about that. I'm not sure if I mentioned last week, last time, that they've announced the programs for the next year. But some very exciting programs. This coming weekend, if you're interested in birds, there's a, somebody talking about birds and birding in Needham.
Oh, yeah.
But looking ahead, among the, among the speakers, Sebastian Smee, a Pulitzer Prize winning art critic, used to write for the Globe, now writes for the Washington Post. Had a book reviewed on the front page of the Sunday Book Review for the Times this past weekend. He'll be here to talk about that subject, impressionism. My friend Suzanne Simpson, who's the executive producer of Masterpiece at GBH, this is GBH's annual entry into the Friends speaker. So she'll be good. And I don't know if any of you know Warren Zanes, who's very successful. He was in Iraq, you know, he's a musician, but also. Wrote popular biographies of Tom Petty and then Bruce Springsteen and working with Springsteen on a, on a movie based on the book and. Warren's going to be coming in talking during the, at the Friends annual meeting. So but those are, those are just a few among, you know, a number of very, very strong. Programs that they have scheduled. So. I don't think there's anything else that occurred at the Friends board meeting. That's. That's basically it.
Any updates from the Library Foundation?
And I attended the Library Foundation. It's been a busy week. And, you know, they're doing great financially. They had their, you know, financial advisor come in to talk about how well those monies doing. At which I went to Rob and said, let's figure out ways to spend it. I think, and you know.
They will, right?
My impression and Rob, you can, you know, clarify is that in anticipation of the cost of all of this, you know, construction phases. There's the notion that there might possibly be, you know, more money to be spent on top of what's budgeted. And so perhaps we'll, you know, you're, you're, you're holding off on appealing to the friends or the foundation, if that makes sense. Taking into account what the town thinks is an appropriate strategy for getting money from these other sources for for these. Right? I don't know if I misstated anything there in terms of the.
No, you haven't.
It's just one of those things where it's great to have other sources of income, but we. Don't want to talk about it too much because. It's really a town expense that should be town funded.
Yeah.
But things might come up where we have to lean on our friends and luckily everybody so far seems to. Be ready and supportive if they need to. Support us financially. And I also had a meeting with some of the town council and Katie. About. Creating a memorandum memorandum of understanding with the town and the Library Foundation of Needham regarding the issue of naming.
Oh, good.
So that has begun. So when we're ready to reach out to the foundation, we'll do so and. The trustees as well, but the town council is now working on a draft of M O U.
Excellent.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, because we talked about wanting to together a policy around that.
And take advantage of the opportunities that are going to go along with the reconstruction over the various phases.
That's true. Excellent. Thank you for those updates. Opening up for trustee comments here at the end of the meeting.
I just was going to say that the. Just this whole process with our build and just the pictures, it's going to be wonderful to see that all come together. I just think those designs were gorgeous and very thoughtful. And I'm just looking to see. You know. Hang on to see what the next round is going to be like. And I just think that being a trustee and. Being a patron first and then a trustee to see what will happen. And how this group of people have pushed this so far forward and. The benefit to this town and. I'm so excited for it. Can't wait till I can tell somebody definitively, we're going to start building here, but wait till you see, just hang on. You know, so I really appreciate that the leadership of. Everybody involved in making sure that all these things were needed. And it's, it's so transparent. And that's something we need, but it's also something that is feasible. And. You know, I, just as a person before I was on the board, people would always come in and say how beautiful this place is. And now I can tell them, just hang on to your hat. So that's my comment.
It's great. So we hope. That our process will continue through, you know, the select board, the finance committee and get to town meeting where that's the big moment. So. We have our fingers crossed.
And as I refresh my memory, then the notion is as soon as it's after, it's going to be after the construction starts, the next. We'll start with design. Doesn't happen with a design during construction. There's going to be construction, then there's going to be, when that's done, then we're going into the design for phase two. Construction for phase two over a period of years.
Not going to overlap.
Yeah.
All right, well, this is exciting.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All those against? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.